From Pioneer, and I'm going to have Mr. Davies have them introduce themselves, but they are here to help us with the pledge of allegiance, and then I think they may have a few more things to tell us.
If you want to start with the pledge and then make it.
Let's start with the pledge.
Start with the pledge, guys. Would everybody please stand and remove your hats?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright guys, just, it's my pleasure to introduce some representatives from our leadership team, our third grade leadership team, and they have a few words for you guys this evening. And then if you have any questions for them, I think they'd be happy to try to answer those questions. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to them. They're gonna start off by introducing themselves.
Hi guys, I'm Leva.
Um, I'm Cole Harrison, and I'm from Mrs. McCall's class.
I'm Casey Harden, I'm from Mrs. McConnell's class.
I'm Brady Grayson, and I'm from Mrs. Metzger's class.
I'm looking forward this year for the dress up day, or rainy week.
I'm looking forward to rainy week because you're gonna stand and read a lot.
I really like the camera day.
I'm looking forward to making the big poster, because I love art.
How we got voted in our leadership, um, we got voted for our class for... For giving speeches and making banners in front of our class.
Um, how we got voted, um, how I got voted in our class is the same thing, we made posters, um, and told about ourselves and...
And our speeches, we told them what we were gonna do.
Um, I think they voted for me because they thought I was kind and thoughtful.
This month, our goal is 500 kindness acts, and we have to tell the teachers of kindness acts we see.
I think my class voted for me because I'm kind, honest, and awesome.
Um, what we do in our meetings is we choose a challenge for the whole entire district area. And then we have a reward if we meet that challenge, and, um...
Yeah, yeah.
And we did airplanes and math exit ticket scores.
Um, if we get the 500 acts of kindness, we will be doing a big game outside after, I think, after specials.
Are there any questions?
I would like to know each of your favorite things about Pioneer School. What is your favorite thing, if you could pick one thing?
I don't really have one.
You have too many.
Oh, like...
Teachers?
Mrs. Metzger.
Is she your favorite teacher?
Well, she's my teacher, so it's probably my favorite.
Each one of you.
Um, my favorite part is math, because you add divided times.
How about Mr. Harrison? What's your favorite part?
My favorite part is recess, because you get a play for, well, play...
Doing math!
My favorite part is learning every day.
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to congratulate you. Very gracious of you to stand up here and speak. Very, very well done. All of you, thank you very much. Just, just so you know, Father Christopher, the bar was just set very high.
Yeah, that was so good.
I'm not sure they get into kids. Fantastic. I couldn't, I couldn't ask for anything better, but I definitely appreciate that. So let's just move right in. I, I just want to point out really quick before I turn the time over to Mr. Doolin, our mission statement, promote high-keeping and responsible citizens. I think we just saw that. And I, I really appreciate Mr. Davies and the team of teachers that are here, and look forward to the, them achieving high, high things, high things, and, my English is a little... I, I look forward to, to see them grow. So, thank you. Mr. Doolin.
Yes sir, ladies and Mr. Chairman, ladies over the board. I would like to start out tonight with a couple guest speakers, so I'll go ahead. From Weezer, Weezer Auto, Smith Auto of Weezer. They're gonna give us, give you a presentation on, uh, what they would like to, to do for this, this school district. And if I could, really quick, that's Mr. Rush, the chairman. That's, that is your leader, vice chair, Melanie Price, the secretary. She's our news director.
Also, if you want us addressing this, this room or this?
Yep.
Well, we thank you guys for having us. We're part of the Smith Organization, Eastern Idaho Auto Company, but, I'm Jake Welker, first of all, and this is Ken Smith. And we've been here since the middle of December. Took over the state's hometown owners. And basically, what brings us here today is, as we look at how we want to get integrated into the community as much as we can, we kind of took some ideas and what we can do to, to, one, help us give exposure, but really help the people of Weezer. It's been clear to us what a great community this is. And I think it's changed a little bit. Initially, before we got here, what we thought, work club marketing and stuff, we had to do, and really want to centralize our focus more on a little closer to here. So what we'd like to do, I've got some pathways for the, the panel, and we'd like to donate a, a new car to the school district. And there's been some auto groups do this in the past, I don't know if any of you guys have seen or heard of this, but basically donate a car to the school district and then, well, or, I don't know, I don't know if it's gonna go to the school district, but give one that the, the kids can raffle off. And basically, what the, I, I put in the description there, what Mr. Doolin and I have talked about a little bit, and kind of our idea of what it would look like. And the whole idea is to try to generate as much money as possible for the school district. And what we foresee happening is if we can get this rolling real quick, that we can draw a winner right at homecoming. And they, the kids sell raffle tickets, and what we have, I did, is that every, um, every club organization, I think, can take part in this, sell raffle tickets, and 100% of that proceeds goes to that club of whoever sells. This will give us, I don't know when homecoming is, I, I think the date will change a little bit, October, so this could give us eight months, nine months of selling cars, and we generate massive income through the school district, obviously giving us some exposure as well. You can see in the pathways that are kind of what we think the car may look like. But, uh, and, and some of the finer details, I don't know if we need to get into that, we can, that we've talked about, how this would work. But ultimately, if we can spend that money here and have the kids, you know, I think the, the money that can be generated for the school district will be unlimited, if, you know, they can reach out to family, friends out of state, wherever, and just sell raffle tickets for this car, so... You guys have any questions, or?
I, I, anybody have any questions?
Yeah, did we set that?
I, I think so. So one of the, one of the, when you're in a bigger area, what we talked about is maybe $25 a ticket, and if you spend $100, you can get five tickets. But we're open to that. I, I did some more research, some of the bigger cities, they, they do $10 a ticket, but they've got a lot more students to do it, and a lot more, you know, bigger community that they, to sell to in programs and stuff. So that's not up to us. Basically, this, you know, we're gonna donate the car, you guys can see in some of the stuff, Mr. Doolin and, and the rest of his team, you know, will do the accounting and, and dispersment of how the funds are, but 100% of it goes straight to the, the school district. None of it, when, when the winner's drawn, then, you know, we're gonna take care of all the costs, tax, title, I think we'll say, we set the tax at 6%, because who knows if somebody from somewhere has a crazy tax rate, but we had to set it low, but, um, 6% on the tax, and we'll pay for everything. No cost to the school district, and just hopefully the kids can hustle and we get some of the programs, get some, some money generated, so...
Appreciate, appreciate you having partnerships with the community, thank you.
Yeah. So, kind of zooming out a little bit, just, the idea is to have a vehicle well wrapped that says, "Find your Wolverine in order to buy a raffle ticket to win this car, donate vice of the auto of Weezer," and it would be at the wrestling games, the wrestling matches, whatever sports games are available, whether it's chess tournaments, and this would be available to clubs, organizations, and not just teams. And then the idea is that there would be a one-to-one ratio, so whoever, whichever organization sold those raffle tickets gets the benefit of it, and that way it's kind of relative to how much energy and effort each director of the organization would put in. And then while we're at the organization, when we're at the, the matches or the games or whatever, it would be announced throughout the game, what we're doing with the car would be parked out front, people would walk past, wonder what it is, just offering more revenue opportunities for the school. And I think conservatively, we should be able to maybe generate a minimum of $125,000, but I think probably quite a bit more than that if we really get after it. And really tremendous, tremendous opportunity for the district, and we'd love to be a part of it.
Pictures of the car?
Talked about a car, small truck, or an SUV?
I think it's a small SUV.
Full, full drive?
Yeah. Brand new, so, I mean, it's gonna have a little miles on it, because we'd rather, but, to the event. That's amazing. I was gonna say, there's one high school kid that might have a choice. Yeah, he's like, "Soyz!"
Not even making out, so...
We're not gonna have bar buying tickets.
Who's white?
We won't have bar buying tickets.
No!
No!
I'm still working on it. Don't take it.
Just get rid of the car and raffle.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes sir, I have a few things, if I could, thank you. First and foremost, I'd like to say that this past weekend, our cheer team, you probably already know, but I wanted to make it public that they won districts again, 16 years in a row, so they, they did really well, yeah. And I understand the competition's getting a little, little, little more fierce, so that's a good, they did a really good job. Now, you went on your tour this afternoon, and you saw the buzzer system is, is in, however, comma, the servers are still going in at the high school. Once the servers get online, the servers will, they'll be online for all the schools. So once the servers get online at the high school, then Pioneer will be the first one to come online, and we'll get that, that information out to the public. I won't say when it's coming online exactly, but we'll say that it's coming, and it just is gonna be some, gonna be some learning curve to how we get in the building from now on, but we'll get there. If I could, just to, just to reiterate, just to remind you that you probably saw the fence has gone up around Pioneer School, and I've ordered a, a rolling gate for this back area to help us with our, our cars and things of that nature, for safety reasons, so there's a gate, there's a gate on order. And this was just brought to my attention, as well as, as Ms. Kyla's, that the, the baseball team went out and secured a grant for $10,000 from the lower foundation, which they'll be applying towards, uh, equipment, things of that nature, so it's a really good deal. And the football team just submitted a, a grant application for $10,000 as well, and they have some plans for that too, right through. So it's really, the lower foundation, we've talked about it, it's just, it's, they, they want to just give out money and to, to schools and, and rural communities to help them with their, their endeavors. As you noted, as you know, already discussed a tad bit, that new thing's going on in food service, salad bar, new salad bar at the high school, lines are, they're getting better, but there's a line, there's a line leading to the salad bar, as well as, we have four new dishwashers sitting in the armory, ready to be installed. Pioneer, I think you get the first dishwasher, but we haven't had new dishwashers in a long time, so new Hobart dishwashers are going in, John can speak to that probably, but we have new dishwashers going in, probably Pioneer, and then phase that over spring break, and probably this summer, we'll finish up with brand new dishwashers. As well as, you know, the smoothies, pizzas, pizza, homemade soup, just to name a few of the, the new things that Misty and her folks are doing in the food arena. And Mr. Rush, you'd asked me to briefly speak about the new gun, gun legislation, which I'm prepared to do, if you'd still like to hear a little bit about that. It's House Bill 415, or better known as the gun bill. And what this does, what, what this, they, they want to do is, the legislation wants to provide an alternative to hiring armed guards in every school district in Idaho, which, you know, they can't do that because of the cost. So their, 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 uh, what they would like to do is, for, for public K through 12 school employees, they would like to authorize them to carry concealed weapons, and they can act as armed protection force within the confines of the school. And I know, right now, I don't need to go into different, the different issues that, that that may cause, but, and individuals that are willing to participate in this program will need to have completed enhanced concealed weapons training course. And while that sounds great, the, what, the enhanced concealed course, you probably already know, is only an eight-hour course, you run 98 rounds through your weapon, and that's it. Now, we as the school district could not come and say, "We want you to take additional training," when it's a state law. So that's my, that's my update on that, on House Bill 415. And some of your questions, that's all I have for my briefing tonight. Uh, yes sir. House pass, it's in center right now.
We'll look forward to more about that presentation, Mr. Doolin. Any questions, Mr. Doolin, on the report? Great, thank you, Mr. Doolin.
Yes sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yes sir.
Let's turn to your admin, your administration, and get some, your recording administration please.
Just a, just a couple things, you want to talk about CTE grant?
Oh, yes sir.
I didn't, I was... Yeah, we, we went back and forth with, we didn't know how long it was gonna take with the kids and group that thing at the time, because we seen the agenda's pretty much.
Maybe just give us some highlights, we, we got a pretty good report, but give us some highlights for the public.
Okay, just a couple things at the high school, obviously, girls' basketball just finished up. We lost a tough one in overtime in McCall. Coach Lorraine Harrison, Taylor Roberts, Lily Smith, and then volunteers Nikki and Maddie Erickson, did a really nice job with those girls this season, got them prepared and, and put them in a position to beat a team that was probably a little better than us, but put us in a position where we had a chance to win it, and it came right down to the wire. So good job to those guys. Boys' basketball, we're getting into districts right now. District play is starting Tuesday for the varsity, we will play Peet. And then depending on how that game turns out, if we win, we will most likely move on to play Home Del on Saturday, with a chance to go to state in that game. We do have a couple games tonight for some of our sub-varsity teams that are playing tonight. We're also hosting a sub-varsity game, and then our vars, a sub-varsity game will play for us. Couple things, we just had the Weezer Invitational, it was a great, great turnout, did, did a fantastic job. Mr. Davies helped run the tournament, we appreciate that. And if you saw on Sunday, we had a little kids wrestling tournament, that is, became quite the fundraiser for our high school varsity wrestling team. They put on the tournament, and they make the money, and that helps them buy equipment and stuff for their, their, their team, so, pretty neat. In total, we wrestled 1,800 matches, and Saturday, we had 800 little kids enter the high school with their parents, grandparents, and everything else, and it was an all-day event, but was, was super fun, and the kids got a lot out of it, so it was good. Couple things that are just happening at the high school, we've started working on a CTE grant, we've submitted it to the state. What we've reached out to the state for is the possibility to upgrade some of our buildings at the high school, with potentially a new carpentry addition, a classroom added to our auto mechanics building, a classroom and greenhouse combination added to our floral design classes. So there's a lot, a lot of possibility there. Had a conference with them this week, and it looks like things are moving forward. Also, we put in another grant for the state, in hopes that we can get some new updated equipment in our CTE programs. Some of the equipment, anywhere from a, a mannequin that is, is about as real life as you can get, to welders, to new computers in Melissa Reed's business class, so, those are just a couple things going on at the high school. We do have a Valentine's dance, if any of you want to help chaperone. That is scheduled for Saturday, the 17th. However, there's a chance we're playing, are, playing Home Del that night, and so if that's the case, we might move that dance, because a lot of our students will want to attend that game, so. Next week is FFA week, the 19th through the 23rd. We have an FFA community breakfast, if you'd like to come and attend that, that's Saturday morning. Pretty neat deal that our students put on, so, pretty great things going on at the high school. And lastly, probably one of our, you know, most exciting things right now is our high school attendance, average daily attendance at the high school is 96.5% for this last month of January, so pretty excited about that, so, anyway. It's all from the high school. Any questions?
Any questions? I'd say, I'd say, but I, I'm proud of our kids, they're, they're really showing up, and they're showing good characteristics, and attitude, and leadership, had sports do that, and they, they're really doing a good job, and thanks to the coaches.
Yeah, absolutely, thanks.
From the middle school, so last week, we did a big fundraising event at our school, the Super Bowl of caring. So all of the students were involved, there was even a little, the homeroom competitions to see who could collect the most items. Mr. Williams' class was the overall winner, I can't think off the top of my head how many items they collected, but they beat the entire school. But the overall item, or the count, food items was 1,396 items that were collected. Money was $454.50, and so all of this will be donated to, to Love Inc. So on Saturday, the 4H kiddos, which, my kiddo's a part of that, so we helped and gather all those items and, and delivered them, and so that was, that was kind of nice to see them all get involved, so, so that was a neat deal. We also had on Saturday the Science Bowl kiddos, they competed at BSU. Between the two teams, they won six matches, and I think that's pretty good from what, from what I hear, so congratulations to them. And then we also did our interim ISATs at the middle school, and have already started been receiving those results. And so from that, we are generating ISAT questions of the day that, that are being displayed during advisory class for kiddos to work on, so that they start preparing for the ISATs, which will be coming up in April, so, these are just a couple of things that we got going on. Any questions?
Your science team?
Yes.
Is there a science club, or is it from a, like, eighth grade science class, or?
No, so it was just, so each, well, now they started doing the Science Bowl competition, and so then the teacher just tries to get... Within the school, tries to get a team together to go and compete, and last year they competed, and so then this year, they got another team together and did pretty well, so, that was great.
They're gonna be getting better this year.
Yes.
I'm sorry, we did not know we were going to be speaking, so I have my phone, just because it has my notes on there, but, so, great things are happening at Park, we are super excited, we're gonna do the first ever Art in the Park School. Yes, very clever. I expected a lot more laughs. Thank you, thank you. We're really excited about it. We haven't done a family event since I've been here, and so we really wanted to make it impactful this spring. I know that they're doing one at the elementary, and so we didn't want to steal their thunder, so we're, ours is gonna be in March. It's going to be March 12th, which is a Tuesday, and it's Art in the Park School. We're gonna have food that's catered through our school district, we're really excited that they're gonna be catering for us, so there, all the families can come, and everyone can have free tacos and salad, and we're gonna have cookies and milk, and they're gonna make a family tree on a piece of wood with a tree in their hands, with a tree, it's all... Anyway, I'm, I'm kind of giddy about it, so I'm really excited about that, to bring our, our community into our park school. We have been, as I've mentioned before, we are doing a challenge with our kids, and every month, they meet their personal ISIP goal, that's based on their skills, then they get to have an ISIP signing, and that's been going great, so every month, we pull the letters down, they come and sign it, and they're like, "I got my math, I got my reading," and so we're at about 55, 56 at the fourth, 56% at the fourth grade, and 61 and 74 in the fifth grade, which is great, and it keeps on improving, improving, and they're tracking their own goals, so they're taking ownership. That's pretty impressive at a fourth and fifth grade level. We also have been doing ISAT practice interims at both the fourth and the fifth, and our teachers have their practice questions, questions ready, because the interims close on February 22nd, you can no longer take the full pieces of the test, but you can create questions, and that's why we're, Aldolfo and Park School are also going to be doing the, the sample questions, because, you know what it is, is testing is a language, and if you know the language, then you're gonna be more prepared for it. And so that's why we're exposing them to these interim tests, so that they can see that, they feel comfortable with it, and we continue on with the practice questions. We have two field trips coming up, this is super exciting, we didn't get to go, we didn't go on any field trips last year, so this year, our fifth grade is going to be going to the Living Voices Our Revolution, and that is at the Cultural Center in Ontario, and it falls right in line with our curriculum, so we're excited about that. And we just found out that the fourth grade is, is going to be going to the Idaho State Museum, so we're very excited about that in March as well. Delta Dental is coming this week, on Wednesday and Thursday, and Monday and Tuesday, and it's so amazing, I didn't even know that, they must do this every other year, I think, but they're gonna do sealants on the kids' teeth, completely free, and even if the, if the kids have insurance, nothing's gonna be charged to them. All they, all we have to do is have permission from the parents. So, parents, if you haven't filled out your permission form, fill it out, it's free. So, we're really excited that they're coming into the school to provide this opportunity, because a lot of time, it is about transportation and getting their kids there. So, thank you, Delta Dental. Okay, I think that's about all we've got here. Okay, I think that's about all we've got here.
That's Shameless Club?
Yeah. They told me I had to do that.
Okay, want to thank Hannah McConnell. She is our third grade teacher that helped organize our student leaders today. She, we met with them this morning, kind of talked a little bit about what we wanted to talk about in preparation. And then she helped them, some of them had cards, you could see that she helped them put those together. So, want to thank her for doing that and getting those guys prepared, for doing such a great job there. Just a few updates, the kids mentioned Reading Week that's coming. The first thing is, you guys can see that we've taken down all the old banners from last year's Reading Week and the wires are empty there. On the twenty-second of February, it's a Thursday, that will be our kickoff assembly for Reading Week. And it's a space theme this year. And whenever I say, "Reading is," the kids yell, "Out of this world." And that's our little chant. And we're going to do our banner parade that day. Each class will walk in, they'll bring in their banners, we'll display them in here and then we'll have them displayed for the rest of the year here in, in the cafeteria. So, it's a pretty cool thing. And then, and then all the activities, the next week, we have some dress-up days. You heard the kids, pajama day, space cowboy or alien or whatever you want to do. And then Wednesday is our one-hundredth day of school. So, we're going to dress like a hundred, whatever, however you interpret that. So, that should be fun. And then on Thursday, we're going to be dressed, it's Cosmic Day, where they wear their bright colors and different things. And then Thursday night is a huge community event, long-time community event, Bingo for Books. And the whole point is to have the whole family come out. We'll play bingo here in the, in the cafeteria. Our PTO bought us a brand-new popcorn machine. So, we're going to be popping popcorn and doing that that night. And then really, the key is, we want kids to walk out with books in their hands so we can get those books into the household and have literacy be a focus. So, if you guys can get out on that night and come and check it out, it's a lot of fun. And we have some volunteers from the high school, from the National Honor Society. They're going to come down and help kind of check cards and make sure that the bingos are correct. So, again, it's a huge community event. So, if you have any questions, let me know, but we'd love to see you guys that evening. And that kind of ties up our Reading Week and it falls on the twenty-ninth of February. So, Meat Day, so that's kind of a, kind of a funny, kind of a funny day to be doing that. But again, just want to say thanks to the parents for bringing our student leaders tonight so they could speak with you guys. And just congratulations to them for doing such a great job and being such great leaders here at Pioneer School. Thanks.
Well, our, our monthly report from Indian Head is going to be a little bit briefer than these guys. Right now, we've got eighteen students enrolled at Indian Head. We are anticipating a graduation at the end of this session, which will be about the twentieth or twenty-first of March. I don't recall exactly the day. But we're anticipating three graduates at that point if everything goes as planned. So, we're counting on those kids to just wrap up a couple more credits here in this term. And then that'll bring our total graduates for the year up to seven for the year. And then hopefully, we'll get one or two more before the end of the school year is out. Right now, we're working four in-person classes, a biology class, an English class, a math class, and a US history class. And then I believe we have nine, nine different courses that our kids are taking online. So, so that's kind of what we got going on. We're just, we're just plugging away, working at it and trying to get some, get some diplomas. So, any questions?
For special education, I just was super excited to be able to include in my report that our kids continue to increase in the percentage of students who are on track to meet or exceed their annual growth. That has gone up every single month in the last three months that we've been tracking that data. And that's just in the area of reading and of course, it's just K-8. But to look at our special education students exclusively and see that kind of gain, so many people to thank for that, everything that happens in our general education classes and everything that happens in our interventions and our special education classes. It takes that whole village for that to happen for our sped kids. So, I'm just really proud of the work that we're doing with that and that we're really looking at the data and utilizing that to help us write IEP goals. I just spent Monday, February fifth, we had a full-day workshop with our special education team. So, I had everybody with me all day. We talked more about how to do data dive and look at our iStation data, how we can look at, we can look at ISATs. But at the secondary level, we also have what's called AZCBM, where we're monitoring student progress in their content areas of reading and math. And talking about how can we look at that and use that information to align it with standards, write IEP goals, because our whole point is to support what's happening in the general education curriculum because we are supplementary program. So, working really hard to have that alignment. And then spent some time, it was super fun, I know for everybody, doing CPI training, which is the, from the Crisis Prevention Institute. But it's really how we utilize verbal de-escalation to prevent seclusion and restraint. And then training on our seclusion and restraint policy that was passed in November. So, I get to do all the fun jobs and teach everybody about all the stuff they're not supposed to do. No, it's been a good time. Everybody's been really receptive, lots of great conversations about how to best support our kids because behavior is one of those things that we know nationwide is increasing and something that we see behaviors in school now that we would have never thought we'd see even ten years ago. So, ways that we can be more preventative and more proactive so we don't get to those points of crises. And if we do, how do we best respond to support our students and maintain relationships with our, within the kids and within our staff? So, everybody's no work of hurt. Any questions that you might have for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I appreciate the time and effort that goes into working towards. I'm looking at the, the average daily attendance and good job for the, to the high school for leading that, leading the average. I think we can maybe create another sub-competition here. No more donations. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. All right, let's move into our consent agenda. Is everybody taking a look at the minutes from our prior meeting? Any changes or updates that you've seen need to happen there? Okay, any changes to our current agenda that we need to make up last minute?
Oh, sir.
Okay, thank you. The part of the meeting that I don't like the very most, now it depends on if it's a retirement or resignation, but any retirement or resignation that we need to go about, Mr. Doolin?
Mr. Chairman, it's that time of year and I have a retirement and a free resignation.
Thanks, Billy.
Dear Mr. Doolin and trustees, it is with bittersweet feelings that I am writing to inform you of my plan to retire at the end of this twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four contract school year. I've been so very blessed to have worked in this district for thirty-two years. I've had the privilege of working with our schoolchildren in many capacities. I began my career in Weezer, teaching fourth grade at Park School with Cindy Campbell as my principal. I then spent a year as a substitute teacher before becoming, becoming the middle school and special education teacher for two years. Larry Goto was my principal then. Next, I moved back to Park School to be the special education teacher for two years. And following that, the success-for-all reading facilitator at Park for twelve years with Dave Kirby as my principal. I've spent the last fourteen years back in the fourth grade, my favorite grade, with Mr. Kirby, Angie Halverson, and Brooke Winston as my principals. I've also taught summer school and the best program. The Weezer School District has played a huge part in the lives of my family members. Besides having myself and all eight of my siblings graduate from Weezer High School, my four children also attended K through twelve in our district. In addition, my husband, Brian Sharp, drove a Weezer School District bus for twenty-three years. My daughter, Rachel, worked as a para for a few years at Park. My daughter, Sarah, has worked a couple of years in the district and my son, Tom, has earned a few paychecks as well. Park School has been my second home for a long time. I have loved the staff and I've had the privilege of working, and I have had the privilege of working with over the years. I must say, I love that old building dearly as well. The relationships with colleagues, parents, and students have had an incredible impact on my life and I have many wonderful, intriguing, and fun memories. I have come to realize that at this time in my life, I need to step away and focus on my personal life, including quality time with my granddaughters while they are young. Maybe in the future, I will find myself ready and wanting to work in the Weezer School District again. I pray that if I seek employment once again, I will be welcomed back. Thank you so much for the honor of having served so many children for many, many years. Sincerely, Bryce A. Sharp. She's a good one. Dear Mr. Doolin, in a gesture of good faith, please accept this letter as my notice of my intent to resign from my seventh-grade social studies position at Weezer Middle School, effective at the end of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. My intended effective resignation date is Friday, May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. I am providing this early notice to allow the district the opportunity to start the process to find a qualified replacement for me without putting undue stress on the building and district administration. It has been an honor and privilege to have taught the students of Weezer. I would like to thank the building administrators and my fellow teachers who have guided and mentored me during my time at the middle school. I wish the best for the future of the Weezer School District. Once a Wolverine, always a Wolverine. Respectfully, Stephen Willing, seventh-grade social studies. Dear Weezer School Board, this letter is to inform the district that I have accepted a job in a different school district and will not be seeking to renew my contract for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. As you know, my job assignment and description has gone through significant changes in the last year. It is mainly for these reasons that after working in Weezer for over fifteen years, I have made the difficult decision to move on to other opportunities. I want to take this opportunity to thank the Weezer School District and community for my overall positive experience as an educator. Although I am choosing to seek changes at this time, I am very grateful for the years I have been able to work in the Weezer School District. Weezer has always been and will still be my home. I am still proud to send my own children to Weezer Schools. I know that Weezer staff will continue to represent the Wolverine way and I wish you all the best in finding my replacement. If you have any further questions, I am happy to discuss further either in person or by phone. Sincerely, Nicole Miller. It is, dear Weezer School District, it is with regret that I inform you that this letter serves as my formal resignation from my position as a school nurse and teacher at Weezer High School for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. I have learned a great deal here and I have learned to work both independently and with a team. I am grateful for the opportunity that you have provided. To ensure a smooth transition for the next person who will take my post, I shall make sure that all student medical records are in order before I leave. Please do not hesitate to inform me if there's anything else that I can do to assist you in the hiring and training process. Once again, thank you for the opportunities that you have granted me during my time with the Weezer School District. Sincerely, Kayla Lowe, school nurse.
Thank you. Thank you, Billy. Any staff that we already considered for hiring?
No, sir.
Let's move on to our financial report.
Financial report, is that me? Yes, okay. Okay, I, we, I highlighted a few things in your financial report packet. Those are new categories. I said I was going to put some new categories. This is probably going to give you a little bit clearer transparency, so to speak. One of them being board of trustees, because there are some expenses that sometimes we occur, whether we're paying for conferences or whether we're doing the gas or whether we're buying supplies. Those will be separated out so that you will know it. There isn't going to be any payroll items out of board of trustees, but that's, that's what that is about. And then business operations, we've always done business operations and included that in district administration. Now, we're going to do district administration. It's going to be more focused on the superintendent with the business operations being business manager, deputy clerk, those, those things are, actually, I'm going to put the deputy clerk and the clerk, those portions of those salaries will probably be in district administration. Business administration will be our supplies, Riley's salary, those kind of things are going to be in there. So, we're going to separate that out so people can get a clear view. Because sometimes I think you look at district administration and think, oh, my goodness, we're a lot in the spend, but there's too many salaries in there. So, right now, it's going to separate that out. So, that's kind of helpful. Also, looking at the bottom there, that fifty-three point six, sixty-six percent, we are at fifty-eight percent, fifty-eight point three-three to be exact of the school year. We are not five percent under budget. We are doing some different kind of accounting that I've still got, I did things a little different, but Barb and I are coming to an agreement. We're going to move some things. We're going to make that so that it looks exactly the way it will. It'll show you that, so I'm going to start at September and it'll be those salaries. Because I've still got my July and August, which went back to two thousand twenty-three. So, those are still in here and I haven't forwarded those other ones in there to get them in. So, it's kind of a timing thing, but it will look better. Lastly, the checking account balance, if in the payroll, if I'm in a positive and she's at a negative, it's that we are conflicting with each other. This has to do with an American fidelity payment that came in, that went into the payroll side and it should have gone into the budget side. So, that transfer has been made, so that's now zero. So, that's how it ended up.
That's the twelve fifty-four.
Yeah, so twelve fifty-four. So, if you'll see that the, the, the one balance is the checking account Columbia is her budget side. The other side is the payroll side. So, it just, it's just a transfer thing. And then in our special funds, our state and federal funds, there was another account that was, that was added. As you can see, there are a lot of accounts in there. I keep printing out the budget report and it keeps getting pages and pages and pages. So, hopefully, at some point, I can eliminate some of these new funds that were developed during the COVID years. But the newest one is called Securing Our Future Grant, which is paying for some of the fencing and some of the different modalities, the key things that we're doing in the school district. And so, that had to be a separate account for the SNF Drew wins is CTE grant. That will be in a separate fund too. I'm looking forward to making another fund. And I'll be number two forty-two maybe. Running out of room there. Okay, does anybody have any questions?
You'll have to have the third page.
Yeah, exactly.
Any questions about the consent report? I think you answered the question, I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good, good.
Make sure that we do a order here. Any, any questions, so any bills, any questions, no, you want to go through some of those bills? Any questions that you have? Any other questions? That's fantastic. We are at the end of our consent agenda, so in order to move on, anybody here can motion?
I want a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. And motion's been made, a second to improve the consent agenda has been, has, it has been given to us. All those in favor? It was you that was good. All right, we're down to any sit, any community input? Was there any forms turned in to you tonight?
No.
Is there any questions from the community about policies that we have had or that we're going to be having? We have been working our cans off the policy. We'll have more discussion of that coming. All right, WEA.
I didn't get to, I'm Nicole Mink and I didn't get to, I was at the last mark. So, congratulations to the three officials that we get to. And we appreciate as WEA that you give us time on, I say this every time, what we do. We appreciate you being willing to listen to what we have to tell you. And one of the first things that I want to make sure that you know, that people listening know, this is not the Nicole Mink thoughts, this is the thoughts of our members and I am representing them. So, just remember that when you listen to my, my comments. This is member-driven and we, I listen to what our members say and this is what I'm sharing with you. So, we first of all want to, we've done this and we've thanked other people, but you are a rock star, Christine. You, and we acknowledge that across our, our buildings, that she has, the food service lady has, you've done some amazing things in our buildings and so, we want to acknowledge you. Thank you. Then I know that you have Um, then, um, I know that you have given us this time because I feel like you want to know what we're feeling or thinking, so I have some concerns that I'm bringing to you tonight. And again, I want you to remember, this is not the Nicole Mink thoughts. This is our members, and I'm sharing with you what they're thinking. Um, we are concerned that the, our defined workday, when we come and when we go, um, is being decided, uh, by the calendar committee, and, which is another reason why we will be bringing, again, when we negotiate, um, asking you to put our defined workday in our master agreement. And we will be bringing that again to discuss. Um, our members are also concerned about how committees are chaired and run and led and how they operate. Um, many of our members will not be on committees anymore, because in the past, it has always felt like the decision that the committee was supposed to have been, have made, has already been made before the committee even got together, and that having teachers and parents involved was just a formality to check off boxes, because the end result still was what started off wanting to happen in the first place. Um, so those are just two concerns that we bring to you tonight. And thank you for, again, for giving us time to talk to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole Misty, for sharing that with us.
Your own connection set if you have questions.
Just, just one question, and make it, as we just asked, in the future, if we could have, um, some notes typed, or so that we can put it in the packet and have it for, for visual.
I was going to say, I personally, we want that, like, not an honor.
That would be fantastic. If we could do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we can move right into action items, and we have a few that we're going to have to take care of, and, um, we have a basketball game at 7:30, so not that we're going to neglect things, but we're going to try to move right through some of this stuff. Because, you know, we want to support the Weezer Wolverines.
Right.
Policy updates. We have, Mr. Mr. Doolin, will you just talk to us about the 5,000s and 8,000s that we, we have to consider tonight?
Mr. Chairman, yes, sir. So the 5,000s are, uh, the ones that are listed are the ones that appear in our, in our, in our hand, our employee handbook. Uh, so I admit, we kind of put the horse, uh, the cart before the horse. So, uh, these are, these, these policies are, uh, pretty much state mandated policies that sexual harassment, mandatory reporter for, for child abuse, things of that nature. So there's really been a lot of wiggle room. So we thought, uh, we, uh, everybody had a chance to look at them, and, uh, depending on what you wanted to do, so we could, we could get them, uh, in our handbook, so they would no kidding be, be approved by the board, so we can move in the right direction.
So we're going to take, we're moving about the 5,000s a little bit different than we normally do for the new school board. We usually, we usually have first reading, and we'll have a working meeting to talk about, but first reading, then we'll go through, now second reading before we adopt. These, I contacted you and asked you to look through. Any questions, um, about 5,000s that, um, would, would hinder us from adopting tonight?
Not necessarily questions, but just like there were different things that said may slash shall.
5320.
So like, or like 5240 says the district will review, but it's like, who's the district reviewing? Or who is the district? I didn't quite understand what that meant.
What, what was that?
5240. Um, it says, under... The district shall, is that correct? Do everything else power? Yeah, is it someone else? Someone else?
You know what?
I don't see it either.
Just from, from my.
Oh, it's 5250, sorry. Under the grievance procedure, sorry. I don't know, I don't, I don't, what does the district mean?
So, so just from my standpoint, you can correct me if you're wrong. It, it is, it is the, one of the main duties of our, of the board to review and adopt policy. But right along with that, with these particular policies, our administrators are going to be heavily involved in, in reviewing and helping us make sure that we're on, on task in.
So when it says district, it could be us, it could be administration, administration or full?
As a, as a review, I would say all of us have to review.
Okay.
We would have, but the district will review.
Yeah, sometimes it says board, sometimes it says district. So I just was confused on what's.
That's my.
When we talked about before, like, we kind of clarified it was dependent on what.
The situation is.
Yes.
Okay.
For a specific, specific school, it's the administration of that school, or if you have a superintendent.
That makes sense.
Yeah, that's how I understood it when we discussed that.
Okay. And then in 5320, it says, under purpose, full district name. So we need to, like, fill that in?
Oh, I will put it.
It's, it's, and then there's some.
There's also the.
And the may shall.
Yeah.
Which, we have to choose one, right? Or do we choose one?
We.
Yeah, we should.
Because.
Yes.
May and shall.
Are different.
Are different.
Yep, no, that was.
That's in the same one, the 5320 kind of.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking right there, and I'm going, oh, that's, that's a problem.
And then under pre-employment testing, it says may, shall.
So you guys decide whether you want may or shall in there, and then I will adopt it as it will be.
What is, what is your thoughts?
5320.
Definitely the full district name is going to be Weezer School District.
Yeah. The may and shall, I was, had the same questions of how the board would feel about that.
Pre-employment testing, like, may be required to submit.
Do we currently require that?
No.
Um, we do have some testing that we do on our transportation, but we don't have it for, um, employees per se.
So we should stick with the word may, and that way it covers us for the transportation, but doesn't require it for all.
And, and then it gives you the right to, to do that, if you need to.
And it's under, um.
Do you want may on both of them, or?
I was going to say, the one under post-accident testing?
Yes.
I think it should be will.
Should it be shall or will?
I think it should be will.
Should it be the speed of determination of the.
Um, we don't test, um, after post-accident. I, I will tell you, um, drivers do, but yeah, that's a motor vehicle, yes, we would, we would test because of that.
Yeah, so it should be will?
Yes.
Is that no matter what? Like, even if they're, even if the police don't?
I believe that is in transportation. Yeah, that's, that's Idaho code, right. So we're going to just follow that.
Yeah.
But we do have some, uh, district vehicles that are not driven by bus drivers, so, um, right, we would, we would, if you want to put in shall or will, we will put that in there, and that will require any driver that has an accident using one of our vehicles to be tested.
Unfortunately, the language isn't clear that they have to be driving one of our school vehicles. The, the statement is while on school business or operating a school vehicle, which means they could be operating their own personal vehicle on school boards.
Maybe we should leave it as may.
Are we going to require, so, so a citation for a moving violation, right? They get pulled over for speeding?
Right.
We're going to require them to get tested for alcohol or controlled substances if they get pulled over for.
It's not an accident that involves.
I was going to say, that says accident.
It says accident which involves or the issuance of a citation for a moving violation. So as long as the word or a citation for a moving violation in there, I don't think.
Drastically different things involves a vitality or just a citation.
Thinking because that verbiage is in there, we should probably stick with may.
Probably better stick with may.
Yeah, because I don't think you want to ask them to take a drug test for driving 36 and 35, so whatever.
That would be monotonous.
Yeah.
Sorry, that would be a lot.
That, that would cause all kinds of problems.
Okay, what about, um, 5335?
Duplicate language?
Like, it's repeated two times.
Yeah.
On page three, the policy starts to be repeated two more times.
Okay, that probably is me not clearing out. Okay, I, I'll tell you what happened. And I thought I got that cleared out.
You're doing great.
Me, I'll tell you what happened. We had a.
I was reading it, and I was like.
Policy that was, uh.
Three times.
Okay, you don't have to necessarily adopt that one this time. I'll have it cleaned up and have it ready for you next time. That, that is, um, this accepted that I, I didn't, I deleted something I shouldn't.
Yeah, those are just silly things, like, the policy is fine, it's just.
I thought those were clean up. I'm, I'm having a problem with simply, I thought I was cleaning.
I thought those were clean.
Any, any other questions?
No, don't, don't, if there's no excuse, that's ridiculous. I've been working on it.
Does anybody with, if we take that policy out and clean it up for next time, does anybody have any, um, issues with adopting this as a second reading?
I will change those words to may and may and Weezer School District. And those, so that will be 5320, and then the 5335 I will clean up and bring back next month.
Work on those.
And you won't have to have any more session.
Okay.
You can have the 5,000s already.
Yeah, but we're going to talk about the 8,000s first, because it's trying to say. The 8,000s are in the same boat, it's not a 10,000 system, but with the 5320. That's okay, is what.
Well, she's taking a change to two words.
So.
Heck, I will clean up right now, where you're talking about the eight.
I didn't see anything on the 8,000s.
Okay. 8,000s are, are similar to the 5,000s that we just adopted, their, their statement, their policies. I did have a question, and it's probably more of a, are we, are we following a policy?
No, I didn't put that, I didn't put the, the school milk, the school milk charge policy. We're going to, we want to discuss that one later. I didn't know what to do about that one.
The unpaid school.
Yeah, that one, that.
I did put, I did do first reading, so you guys are welcome to make comments on that one later.
Yeah. Yes. So the question I have, and, and I'll try to make it quick, like, in, in 8105, um, it talks about every trip that students get on a bus, they should be receiving instructions about safety. And I talked to a half dozen students about, are they receiving that instruction when they get on the bus? And like, once a year. Most, there was a couple of them that never heard those safety instructions, and they're students. I, I get it, I got a couple, but if we're going to adopt this policy about safety instructions for students, every trip that they go on, we probably need to come up with, with maybe a, a cheat sheet so that the drivers can, like you're getting on an airplane, right? But I, I think that's important. If we're going, if we're going to have a policy that states that we are going to give them instructions on how to use the safe, the emergency exits and safety, you know, leaving the bus in emergency times, we probably, we better be following our policy. So that, um, I like the policy, but I, from, from what I've been told, it's, we're not following the policy.
I guess to every bus driver is just saying the same thing.
That was my question, probably on all, the 8,000s, like, we talked about that kind of keeping us in line with, um, in compliance, to say. Um, but my question, you know, are we doing it just to be in compliance, or are we actually following through, you know, what I'm saying? And so that's, that's my whole, I guess.
Yeah, there's a lot.
There was one I had a question on, and this, this is just a personal question, and it's probably, whether it's, I don't know, it's a federal thing, might, might be, and Misty might have an answer for me on this one, that 8230, the nutrition standards, why, why not full milk?
I don't even know when they stopped that, but there was an issue, um, I actually, yeah, Obama, so 2012 probably, but yeah.
I just think it's funny, because skin milk is high sugar, like, so it's interesting.
There's a lot of interesting things that they do.
That makes sense.
Makes it very gray across the board, so we're always trying to.
Yeah.
The only question I had was in regards to policy, uh, it was actually procedure, 8310, the automated external defibrillator, I can't say it, defibrillators. Uh, refresher training shall occur at least every blank years or sooner.
Good, great, that has been changed. It's going to be annually?
Annual.
That's what they want to do, is annually. I am struck, I mean, I'm, I'm sitting there going, this is crazy. Um, that was changed to say annually before I uploaded it for you, so.
What is 8310?
That is supposed to be, and that was, that came from, um, we visited with Kayla Lowe, and she was the one that suggested to give me an annual. And she's, she monitors that very carefully.
So you'll change that?
Mm-hmm.
Again, no, I appreciate that.
No, very, very.
Um, 8120, I have, um, never seen the bus routes or safety zones. I know we've talked about them, um, it says that it'll be presented to the board, so.
We talked, yeah, it's that time set off on, uh, October.
We have a map of, do we have a map of that? Okay, I just, I missed it, sorry. And then one that my kids and I kind of talked about, 8270, teachers are encouraged not to give candy as, as prizes. I, I upset my kids when I told them I was going to remind our, uh, teachers that it does say they're encouraged not to, it does not say that they can't, but they really like being incentivized by candy, so, you know, just open our.
And I heard parents complain about that.
Yeah.
They don't love the panel consumption of their elementary kids.
So. They should just be encouraged to adhere to the district nutritional standard.
Yeah, that's right.
Talk to the nutritionist.
No sauce.
Does anybody have any heartache about adopting 8,000s that we've been given, when we changed the defibrillator policy to annually, uh, adopting these as a secondary? Okay, so I would entertain, oh, right, there is the 80, 8245, the head of first reading, so.
Yeah, I, you guys need to discuss that one, though, and Scott.
Yeah.
I didn't, no consensus doing that one.
So I'd entertain a motion to adopt 5,000s and 8,000s as a, as been presented to us with, with the updates and excluding 82.
8245.
And 53.
335 and 5320.
No, 5320.
You try.
Okay, hit me.
I'll, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to adopt these five thousands and eight thousands as they have been presented as a second reading, exempting fifty-three, thirty-five, and eighty-two, forty-five, which will be seen as a first reading.
I second it. I think that's a motion, and it's been seconded. All those that are in favor?
Aye.
It was unanimous, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Did I make you go like a...
It was good, it was good. All right, we have another opportunity to talk about our school, three-year school calendar.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. It's not even coming tonight.
I think you guys have copies of the most updated calendars. And the thing that I want to kind of point out here, okay, is this first one that we put up is... The first one that we put up here is just the two-week Christmas vacation, okay? One of the things that came out of our committee's work is, the question just came up, parent-teacher conferences are so different at the elementary level versus the secondary level? And the question came up, do we necessarily have to have exactly the same parent-teacher conferences? Because the attendance at the, at the middle school and high school is so much different than they are at the elementary school. You know, if you get fifty percent, that's pretty, that's pretty good. Whereas in elementary school, you get ninety-five percent or better. So, one of the things that was discussed there is, is that we wanted to look at an opportunity here to keep, just provide some difference here. So on the seventeenth of October and the twentieth of March, what we're recommending is, is that we would possibly have the high school just have school that day. And then they would have parent-teacher conferences in the evening on the nineteenth and the twentieth. Whereas at the Pioneer, at Pioneer School and Park School, I mean, those teachers are meeting with parents, because like I said, they'll get right close to a hundred percent. And what that does is, that actually gives the high school an opportunity to pick up a couple, couple instructional days. The high school requires the most hours, and in that way, we can, we can take a look at that, okay? And then, another thing that came up is these five days at the start of the school year right here for teacher workdays. And I know that everybody would really love to have those days, but if we want to try to keep the number of hours that were, for instruction and also for the teachers, the amount of time that they're gonna work, those are kind of tough to keep in place. And I think I explained this the last time. It's, where Christmas falls really kind of determines what you can do and what flexibility there is at that Christmas time. I know that most people would tell you, if they surveyed their staff, they talked, even talked to parents, they like having two weeks at Christmas, so if somebody wants to travel, they can do that. Well, when Christmas falls on Wednesday, that's, that's the perfect time to have a two-week Christmas vacation. Because we're probably not gonna have great attendance if we have school on Monday, the twenty-third. And I know we'll have horrible attendance if we have school on Monday, or on Tuesday, the twenty-fourth. So it just pushes us into that two-week Christmas vacation. Well, when that happened, we actually had to reduce the number of contact days by two if we want to start and finish at the same time, okay? So that was that original calendar that we, that we presented from the committee, is that it was two days short. And then when I asked you guys, hey, should we try to, should we try to work on keeping those, those hours the same? We came up with a couple of different compromises there. And the big, the big one is having those parent-teacher conference days, the contact days, potentially the middle school and the high school, but that would be something to look at. And then one other thing that I want to kind of point out here is Pioneer School already does this. I think Park School would like to do the same, is on the nineteenth, that first day, again, we're not required to have the same number of hours. So make that an orientation day at Pioneer School and at Park School. So parents have an opportunity to come, meet the teachers, drop off all their students' materials, and then have that, it's not such a rushed event. Like, I know that some of you guys have been to those, those evening events that we have, the back-to-school nights at Park School and Pioneer, excuse me, Middle School. And a lot of times they fall on the same night, and you're rushing from one to the next one, and it's just, it's really, really kind of hectic. So this would be a little calmer, be able to come in and really touch base with the teacher, maybe talk with them a little bit one-on-one, and have that opportunity, and then just have those schools start on that next day, okay? That was step one. So, do you guys have any specific questions for me? What we tried to do is, we tried to get a lot of feedback from the buildings. We, I told everybody to make this back shirt with their, with their staff. And then, we tried to be as responsive as we could, starting, you know, Pioneer School, Park School, potentially Middle School on a different day than the high school, so the high school can pick up some hours. Being flexible with the parent-teacher conference days, to try to maybe get a few more instructional hours for the secondary, but really, that focus on parent-teacher conferences is so important at the Pioneer School and Park School level. One of the things that you guys charged the committee with is, we wanted to stay as close as we possibly could to instructional hours, and we wanted to stay as close as we possibly could to work hours. Well, when we lose a few days, okay, of instruction...
Is that what, when you emailed us and you asked us?
Yep.
Because I did not respond to that.
Yep, yep, and I just wanted to kind of see where you guys at, because that was, so what, so what I did, and I want to make sure I've got the right... Fire here just a second, I want to make sure...
The next calendar has contact.
Yep. I want to make sure that I have.
Doesn't it have the...
Okay, right here, you guys, on this one right here, I want to point out what we did, okay? This one right here, okay, this is probably, I would say, probably the most popular calendar. And let me show you the differences between this one and just the one where there's two weeks at Christmas. This does say two weeks Christmas and Thanksgiving, we're not taking two weeks at Thanksgiving. That was just a note for me to look at Thanksgiving, okay? So we only take two weeks at Christmas, not two weeks at Thanksgiving, okay? What we, what we did is, if we take the days, Monday and Tuesday of Thanksgiving week, if we remove those, so there's a full week, well, we lose two contact days with kids, and that's two days that staff has to work, okay? So, what the committee looked at as a possibility is, we put two contact days right here. Start on a Wednesday, and teach on a Thursday, and then have a workday on Friday. That's that five days, okay, of professional development that we wouldn't have, we would have three days. We'd have two to start off with, we'd have the fourteenth and fifteenth, of course, where we would see kids, and then we would have a workday on Friday, and then come back on the nineteenth and go to work. That helps with student contact, but that reduces, in this calendar, the faculty would work eleven hours in, eleven point one, point four one hours less over the course of the year. Okay, a day and a little bit, okay? Now, one of the things that, on this one, if you look, if you look right here, this is what we're currently doing, okay? This is what it would be if we went with this calendar over here. And the way that we, that the committee talked about it is, they said, why don't you just add ten minutes to the day? To make up those days that we missed. So instead of working from, you know, seven forty, seven forty-five, is that what it is? Yeah, seven forty-five to three twenty. Go seven forty-five to, seven forty-five to four thirty. The people at the committee, then they went and talked back to, talked to some of the staff, and they said, we're here anyway. I mean, you know.
So that's for staff hours, not school days.
Not kids, but require people to stay until four thirty. I would rather go on the other end and make it earlier, but not everybody's a morning person. So I think probably the consensus, we could even go five on one end, five on the other end. But I just wanted to tell you guys that that was the way that we kept it close, because there's three days less of work, okay? Okay, and that's, and that's how we kept it close by adding that ten minutes.
So, give me just the, so, turn that back on, would you please?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get in here, I wanna, I wanna find the one that has my calculation, so you can look at the calculation.
Can you show the...
The, I'll show you the formula. Okay, I'll show you the formula.
So you say, you've gone back out on that one, that second one is...
Pretty popular.
So, my question, is this why you're doing that? And I'm taking into consideration parent-teacher conferences, and I know that you guys have valuable trainings as schools on those Fridays. What if, what if instead of, and tell me the answer is, I'm, I'm... What if instead of having parent-teacher conference on the seventeenth, in the evening, fifteen, sixteenth, seventeenth, evening, what if we move your teacher required day down to the eighteenth, and you had parent-teacher conference on the evening of the seventeenth, or, or all day on the eighteenth? What, how does that change what the teachers need?
I think what, I think what people would tell you is, especially at the secondary level, if we have a day session, you know, like, one to four, we get virtually no one. But if we have evening sessions, we get people to show up, we get people to show up. Now, at the elementary school level, at the elementary school level, they're scheduled parent-teacher conferences. So, I think it's a little different, I think, you know, it's nice to have some evenings for people to work, and we have two evenings that way.
Okay.
But again, again, just sharing what, what information that we, that I delivered with that, okay? One of the things that you want to look at right here, this is, this is where we're at, I'm gonna show you right here. Okay, currently, everybody in the school district, we work eight point five three hours per day, okay? In this calendar, there's a hundred and forty-seven day, this year there was a hundred and forty-seven of those days. When we have work Fridays, they're eight hours, eight to four, there were sixteen of those, and those might be those five days that start the school year as well. But there's sixteen days where there's no kids, but staff works. And then this twelve hours right here is the hours for parent-teacher conferences. Three hours Wednesday night, three hours Thursday night, happens twice a year, so six and two is twelve. And that right there is the number of hours that we currently work, okay? If we look at this one, okay, the difference, the only difference is, we go eight point seven five, okay? Eight point seven five hours per day. And as you can see right here, let me blow this up a little bit, so you guys can kind of see a little bit better. Okay, you guys can see right here, if nothing else changed, and this is the one, you guys, where we have, you know, the five days to work, we have, we go the two days in Thanksgiving, okay? If we did that, and we added ten minutes to the day, we would work six hours point zero nine, six point zero nine hours longer, okay? If we added ten minutes to, to the day, okay? If, if we go with the...
I am not a fan of having ten minutes to the day. I would say that right now.
To the teacher's day, not the student's day.
I just, I don't know, it seems odd. Can I ask if it was considered to move graduation to Memorial Weekend?
I, I was...
Mine too, and why did we go away from that?
Um, we got away from it, and I would tell you that probably most of the feedback that we got back from people that we talked to, they said, we don't want to, we want to be out of school before Memorial Day. We want to be out before Memorial Day. So we've been doing it for...
So the longer days are like, the longer days are more preferred than adding a couple of days after Memorial Day?
That's, I would, I would say that the feedback that I've received, yes. I don't think there's a lot of people that want to go back to graduation on Memorial Day weekend, and then have to come back after that.
See the current and then the proposed, is there, like, is there a reason that, is there a magic, is that a magic number that we're at right now, that thirteen ninety-three?
Nope, it's just what we're doing.
And so just trying to stay there?
That was set by the board, saying that they wanted the same number of work hours that we had.
This, that, so thirteen ninety-three point nine one was set by the board at some point?
Same number of workdays.
It was the same, so it was what, what we were doing before we went to a forty school week, and when we considered that calendar, we didn't want to change, we wanted all the same contact hours and all the same hour work.
And how, how much higher are we than state requirement?
Okay, right here, there are the, there are the required hours. At Pioneer School, at Elementary School, you're considered, excuse me, you're required at eight, ten. We, on this calendar, this proposed calendar, we would be at eight fifty-seven point six two, which is twelve hours less than we are this year.
But it's forty-seven hours more than the state requirement.
Than the state minimum. Yep, okay? Park School, there's nine hundred is the required, they're at nine forty point one eight, but this calendar would be twenty hours less than we're doing this year, okay? At Weezer Middle School, you're required nine hundred hours as well, they're at nine seventy-three, okay? And then the high school, this is nine through eleven, you're required to have nine ninety. And with this calendar, and we're seven hours down, okay? We'll just add a thousand and one, so you're only eleven hours. That's nine through eleven. The seniors, I didn't put it on here, they actually can have eleven hours less, so they can be nine seventy-nine. That's how we get an early release.
So I would kind of say, we don't need to get on like such a early release.
So, okay? And then if we were to go with this calendar, the way that it's printed, and add ten minutes to the day, every single day, you're eleven point four one hours below what we're doing right now. And we can see, and we know that a workday is eight and a half hours, okay? This is right now, okay? Because this one is, you guys, this is the one that takes Thanksgiving and makes it a full week. So when you take those days out and you put them in here, you get student contact time, but you don't get staff contact time. Because we took two days out, and we changed two workdays to two contact days, we were working those days anyway. We lost two days of work, okay?
Have we ever considered Monday off instead of Friday?
We attempted that.
Was it, I intended that, I mean, like, it was, there was, no, it was pretty strong on the question.
Way, way over on Friday.
Really?
Seventy, over seventy percent of the people that responded in the survey said Friday.
Talk to some people, they're just like, oh, okay.
So, I guess, what I would, what I would ask the board for the guidance, because I'll make the calendar however we need to do it, okay? And I can go back with my committee, okay? We just have to know the hours, okay? I mean, what we have to know is, are we gonna stay, do you want us to stay exactly at the other, at the old hours that we were at this year? Do we have the flexibility of plus or minus one day? However you want to do that. If staff is going, oh, gosh, I don't want to work ten, ten extra minutes a day. And I'm gonna put another, there might be three months where we have two Fridays for people to work, if we need to keep the hours the same.
How's your staff, do we know, like, our staff attendance on those Friday workdays?
Great.
It should be a hundred percent, but I just have a feeling it might not be.
Again, I have one person on that.
They gotta be a personal day, or they gotta be...
Right, right. I'm just curious.
So, and here's, here's the other, here's the other thing, I... So, and here's, here's the other, here's the other thing I, I guess I wanna throw out, and this is what the committee, we've talked about this a lot, okay? If you wanna set the start of the school year, and you wanna set the end of the school year, and we have a certain number of hours we've gotta be here, and you want two weeks off at Christmas, and you want a week off at Thanksgiving, you gotta have longer days, or you gotta have more Fridays, I mean, it, it, you can't have everything, and that's, that's, that's one of the things that, um, I think that there's, there was a lot of information shared with us, that's why we changed the parent-teacher conferences, to try to take into account some different things. We've talked about having the fourteenth, um, and the fifteenth possibly be, um, you know, orientation days at Pioneer School and Park School, because we're over on hours, but still having, you know, teachers working at that time, but do something to welcome kids back, and have them, and so we're, so we're actually looking at starting the school year at different times for the elementary school and the secondary school, 'cause that is quite a difference in the hours required, um, but at the same time, we've gotta try to, we have to keep our workdays the same, right? I mean, people's under, everybody's under the same contract, okay, so we gotta keep that the same, um, so it's just, there's just a few of those things that, um, that you've gotta kinda keep an eye on, um, potentially, to do this. So, what the committee will do is, will take the information, but really what it all boils down to is, we need to kinda know, okay? We gotta know, how many instructional hours do we want, and how many work hours do we want? Because there's only so many days in the calendar, um, that we can do, and I think, I think if, if people feel strongly that they want a longer Thanksgiving, and I get it, I get it, that's, you know, I've had a lot of parents say that they would like a week for Thanksgiving, well then we've gotta, those hours have gotta go somewhere, right? If we're looking at keeping instructional hours the same, but we are over, okay? We are over, and if we say, hey?
As, as I look at this, it's easy, it's, it's an easy argument, that your lower levels, you know, you can, you're Pioneer and Park, it's easy to say, it's easy to give them a week.
Oh, yeah.
But a snow day, like we, we have one this year, when we're only eleven hours over on this calendar, you have one, maybe two snow days.
Oh, yeah.
Now we have to think about making up, and go another day somewhere to meet that state minimum of, of contact hours, right?
Well, and those, these are, these hours right here, okay? These hours right here are the number of hours kids are in their seats, okay?
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying.
When we, when we do the, uh, when we do the state calendar, I believe we can count twenty-two hours of professional development as, as, um...
As contact hours.
Yes, so there's a little more of a buffer there, these are the hours kids are in the building, in the chairs, if they were in attendance, a hundred percent.
Don't we have a buffer on snow days as well, or no?
You get, we get eleven, we get at eleven hours of emergency culture.
So...
Is that the data?
Uh, it's not like we have one.
Right, right.
So when we, when we first met, for some backgrounds, for, for the degree, when we first started talking about this, and we're supposed to be talking about the calendar often, not just, um, the, the board then elected to keep the contact hours within the school, the teacher hours, the same.
Yep.
What I'm hearing now is that, that...
The same as when we were five days?
Yes, yes, so now we, we need to decide, okay, do we want to have a plus or minus? Because the plus or minus is gonna come in, because Christmas and Thanksgiving don't always follow the middle of the week, so you're, you're always Thanksgiving, yeah, sorry.
But, but what are...
So that, that, that buffer, thank you. Yeah, yeah, no, that, that buffer is important, right?
And, and what, and that's, and that's what, um, that's what I do, so you guys will just, you know, and if you guys will just tell me what the hours, uh, if we wanna keep them the same, if we want, if it's okay that we reduce a day or two, uh, I can get that taken. I only did one year's calendar.
Yeah.
'Cause I wanted to wait until I heard from you guys what the other two would look like, and, um, and I think if you get, um, like I said, don't wanna rush into this, I wanna make sure it's done right.
I, I think it's interesting that, um, this particular calendar was the one you got the most positive feedback from, when, last month, when we talked about calendars, it was, I felt like an overwhelming majority really wanted that one week of no contact hours, like, it was almost a, pretty much, don't take that away from us, maybe, was the message I felt like I heard, and so I, I guess I find it interesting that this...
But what I would tell you is, the feedback that, that we received is, people want that week at Thanksgiving.
More so.
And they said, "If I could get a week at Thanksgiving, I'd potentially get this up," and I know that there would be a lot of pressure on the administrators to really be careful on what activities we'll plan on the twelfth, thirteenth, and sixteenth, 'cause I think they would really want some work time in their classrooms to get prepared and set up, so maybe less PD and more workday at that time, and then have, have more, um, PD later on, you know, on Fridays.
I know that no matter what we do, there will be people unhappy.
Yes, that would be guaranteed.
And that's unfortunate, um, that we can't find something to come together on it. I think the one thing we all agree on is our mission and vision, which is highest achieving, the highest achieving school in Merle, Idaho, um, I don't think we do that with a minimum number of the state required days, um, I'm not trying to say I want the maximum number by any means, but I don't think that should be our baseline, I don't, I, I struggle with that because of our mission and vision, which is to be the highest achieving school. I mean, in order to do that, we need personal time to prepare, and we also need contact time, and I don't know the best way to manage that, and the best way to balance that, but that's kind of what, how, is in the forefront of my mind when I make this kind of decision, you know, like, that people will be mad at you.
Well, I think you can kind of go into that, like, when you had the calendar with the two days before Thanksgiving, I mean, you can only imagine what your attendance is probably on those two days, that it's probably not great, what kind of instruction is really happening those two days? Probably not great, because you're missing kids, so I get the minimum, we don't wanna be at the minimum, I get that, we wanna be the highest achieving, but that also goes to, like, what is happening in our classrooms every day, and I think we have to be kind of realistic about that, um, that, so I, like, I like the week off at Thanksgiving, 'cause I think those two days are probably pointless, they're a waste of, of time, honestly, just because teachers can't do good quality stuff on those days, 'cause kids are missing.
And the reason these numbers right here, you guys, are higher for Pioneer, Pioneer School and Park School, is because, um, we would have less contact, because we wouldn't have those days with kids when our, when the secondary is in parent-teacher conferences, and Park School's never done an orientation during her day, they've always had it in the evening, that's why it jumps up to twenty hours, because one instructional day, the first instructional day would be more of an orientation day, so that's why that number goes up there.
Any questions? On your instructional day of the year, orientation, what in your Park and Pioneer Schools, what percentage do you have of attendance if you have a full day, or if you have evening? Because parents with kids that are working, probably aren't gonna show up as heavily on a day as they would in the evening.
I've, I've never been here for that day, you know, I was not here for the orientation, I'd have to ask, but I think it's pretty, I think it's fairly high, I think a lot of people, a lot of people come in, drop in, drop their stuff off, and it's, it's pretty scheduled too, right? It's not like... Not on the first date, but, but parent-teacher conferences are very scheduled. Very scheduled.
But I think, do they start early on that day? I think if I remember starting, like, parents could come in before work, right? Like, seven AM or seven thirty or something, so that there was that time for, for parents who had to go work, picking them up early.
You have to have the teachers, if they didn't choose to have a preparation meeting.
What's that?
If the, if parents don't have a lot, or if the parent-teacher...
Yeah, 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 there's...
It's about each day.
I'm not ready to like...
No, I, I, you, you guys, I think...
And what, so what he's asking of us is not to say, this is the calendar, what he's asking of, of us is to give him some ideas on hours. As, as we go back to these, what hours do I have, what latitudes does he have to push and, and what would change, it's not, this is the calendar.
Well, fuck, we already gave up, you know?
And then I can...
Stay at the same hour.
Well, if, and, and what I could do is, I could do one where there's ten minutes added to the day, here's that, here's one where there's a couple months during the year, or wherever, we add in a couple extra Fridays to make up the time, so I, I just need to know those hours, so then the committee, we can sit down and we can kinda tweak it in a couple different ways, and then we'll match the hours that you guys are telling us to plan.
Committee, the hours, for me, it's, do we make sure that we have enough hours in case of emergencies? Because we don't wanna be sitting here making up the days of the other school year. And I'll say that we have to do that as a school district, if we do have Fridays, we could use as an emergency, if we needed to.
Yep.
Or, I mean, if there was some kind of crazy emergency, we could go after Memorial Weekend, it wouldn't kill us, I mean, we used to do it for years.
We did forever, yeah.
Forever, and, I mean, most people don't get out until June, so we already get out very early, I mean, it does seem like we could go longer if we had to. That's just my opinion.
So, I, in my mind, I, I keep going, you know, I, we're talking about all these things, and the reason why we chose to stay with the same contact hour is because we wanna be the highest achieving real school district in Idaho, and it doesn't, to me, and I, and I said it when we had the superintendent Haddis state of the school district address, the first question I have is, what's best for the kids? Contact hours is what's best for the kids if we want our, our scores and our, our achievements to stay high, we're not gonna, we're not gonna stay high or, or be the highest achieving school district if we go to the minimum hours, you hear this from me, do it. So, I personally like keeping the contact hours, I, I like giving you latitude in, because every year's gonna be different, you know, this year it's, it's getting two weeks at Christmas is easy because of where Christmas lies, but if we give you the latitude of stay within, you know, ten hours, um, and, and ten hours could be a lot, ten hours is a lot at, at high school, but it's, but it's not very immediate at this secondary, so that's my personal thoughts, is keep the hours as close as we can, um, and, and keep our kids in class.
All agree with that.
But we also know that vacation time is really rejuvenating, though I don't, so that's one of the reasons why we, we like the four days of a week, is, is that Friday is rejuvenating, Friday through Sunday is rejuvenating, we get back to work, get back to school on Monday, or rejuvenate, or rejuvenate.
So guys, if this is, if this is the current hour, are you, are you telling me, like, try to keep it within ten hours of that? Is that...
That's my, that's what I said, but I, how to, right, that's me, how do we, what do we guys?
Then across the board, and all, fortunately, five, yes?
I think you got, I think you worry more about the high school, and everything else falls into play with what that is.
They are way over, right?
Everybody else is way...
But again, we have to keep in mind, you know, we, we run, you know, we only run buses once, and we all share transportation, I mean, there's some, there's some moving parts.
Yes, so ten hours with, if we say ten hours with the high school, then you could potentially be one hour over if, if we took, but the fact that you, you know, added a workday, you know, added, I, I like the fact that we kept the high school in, school, in session all day during parent-teacher conferences, 'cause I, I, I think that added, that added, that added contact, and, and from what I hear, parents aren't coming to a teacher conference down in the evening anyway, so even if you went to noon, you're still getting credit for a full day, or one o'clock, you get credit for a full day, so...
And we're talking ten hours from the chart instructional hours of this year.
Yep.
The one thousand and eight point five.
Yep.
So that means you could go to nine ninety eight point five, five.
If you want to be exact.
Any other way. Let's do that.
Is that, it sounds, I think that sounds...
No, I'm good with that, I mean, I think that's a good, is that...
Oh, yeah, I just, like I said, if I just have, if I know what parameters we have to work within, we can, we can come up with some calendars for you guys, there's no question. Okay?
Can I also ask, the next time, like, I don't know necessarily who else on the committee or anything, but could we have some more people from the committee here to go over with us? Just in case we had questions you didn't have to answer. I would, I would like that, I would just...
Great, great asking. Okay, is that, can we...
No, this one, this one, I don't think I motion, this was more discussion to give him parameters, so that he could...
I'll have the calendar for you guys tomorrow?
Okay.
Okay, we beat that horse.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, because we have a, that's, that's necessary.
We do that.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
I am, yeah.
Okay.
You got to check out.
The item C on action items, um, this is, this is right in line with B, is that correct, Mr. Dale?
Right, that's what you talked about.
Okay, why don't you give us...
It's your choice if you wanna go into executive session and reference D, or I'll give my recommendation, and we can, based off of that, then go into a few lines.
Why don't, why don't you give us your recommendation, and we will discuss whether we need to talk further about it?
Okay, uh, I've met with all my administrators, we did a mid, we did a mid-year evaluation, and, uh, it's my professional opinion that, uh, we, I recommend that we hire all of our administrators back for next year, including our new, uh, principal at Pioneer.
Any, any questions, any reason? So the reason for executive session, you know, I can say, um, is to talk about personal, you know, individuals, person, individual personnel, um, if you have any questions about why should or shouldn't, that's where we need, if we're already in them, but we, it's not needed, then we don't need to do that.
So our interim principal at Pioneer is interested in coming back?
That's a true statement, ma'am.
That's exciting.
So in order to move on and not go into executive session, if we're all in agreement, it would take a motion.
I'm going to rehire all of our staff with three thousand point four point five students?
That would, that would be our administrators.
Administrators, yeah.
Well, as well as the rest of those, those are items, they carry some, some carry some different hats.
As, and, and we can ask, as stated in item B.
Okay, then we add item D then, right, is that what you said?
Well, I mean, the staff considered in item B, principals, academic achievement director, federal programs director, and special education director.
John, you're the mayor.
I move that we consider the rehire of principals, um, the academic achievement director, federal program director, special education director for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
I'll second that. Motion, yeah, the motion, motion to consider or to rehire these individuals has been made and seconded, all those in favor? All those in favor? I, it was you, Dan.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll see you the rest of this year and next. The next item on our agenda is to consider appointing two trustees on this board to the negotiations team that will negotiate with our teachers, union, the EBA coming up in...
We haven't sent a date.
We haven't sent a date, but coming.
Usually about end of March, kind of first of April, hopefully.
Before we get to the contract. So, we need two individuals on the board to be on that negotiation team.
Oh, good. One on the board, the other.
So, the question is, and this is just the way it's been, Melanie, this will be your first year on that negotiation team.
Yes.
In the past, gladly let you do it. We generally kept one person that did it, and a year passed, just had some experience and added another one, and then potentially next year, having Melanie and somebody else.
Okay.
I was on it last year, so I can do it, but if you would absolutely love to do it...
I would gladly let you.
Okay.
So, we're doing it.
Melanie. I'm not, I've just explained because there's a lot. So, yes, we need to make a motion for those two.
Want to make the motion?
I can make a motion.
Oh, I'll make one. Okay.
To appoint myself.
Oh, that's true. Okay, I make a motion to appoint Melanie Price and Jim Brush to the negotiations team for 2425.
Motion's been made and seconded for a negotiation team.
Okay.
All, oh, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
I, I should have said, maybe just, it was, sorry. Emergency school closure, we have to...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it's right in the packet right there, just to sign it, we need a change. It's just to say that we really did have a snow day, and we're trying to go on the states.
So, take a motion, Connor.
It does take a motion because we have to send that in your state. It's just, it's just that you sent in your calendar, got it approved by the state, and so we were supposed to have school on that day for the emergency closure. We do have some give, the 11 hours, but we do need to ask for it, otherwise they're going to say we have zero dependents. Do not have that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the emergency school closure on January 18th due to snow and ice conditions. Second.
All those in favor? I, it was you, Dan. On this, just really quick, on this agreement, it doesn't say anyone for the board chair, it's county commissioner and...
I'll go find the other side.
Okay, okay, we'll talk.
I just don't, I was going to sign it, but I couldn't find the spot, so we'll get there. The other item that we have to consider is to, in order to be a polling location for our county election, we need to approve a polling location. If done, in the arm raising, any more information than that is, then as a board, we have to approve that our county needs a polling location. Now, we'll take a motion.
I can make a motion for that also. Have we approved the Washington County request for a polling location at our district? I'll second it.
Motion to approve the location has been made and seconded. All those in favor? All right, let's talk about accepting an E-rate bid for a category one internet service.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we went out, Silvits came in last week, and Ms. Barb and another person opened them, and you looked along, like, they gave you a piece of paper that talks about MTE, FATB, Cable One, and Spark, right? And they made a decision, a recommendation on who they'd like to go with based off our needs. And further ado, I'll turn it over to Sean, and then Ms. Barb can pipe in if he misses anything.
All right, everybody, have their paper. I will read through the particulars on it. Midvale could only offer one gigabit service, and at this time, we're peaking at one gig. And when I put the new category two bid that we just signed off on into service, I know for sure our bandwidth usage is going to increase above that one gig. So, we were looking at at least two gig, which is what the state currently offers us. And so, that kind of rolled out MTE completely because they do not offer a two-gig plan or a five-gig, which is what we had in our original bid that we sent out for that proposal. So, off of that, we came up with a calculation between the one and five because FATB didn't put a two-gig bid in there, so we went off an average, and then, so between that and, so the cost difference was just minimal. And the reason our team decided to go with FATB was just off of that because everything else was pretty equal. The proposals looked really good on both Sparklight and FATB, and obviously, the cost alone with FATB was a lot, a lot less over that timeframe. You guys have any questions on our recommendation?
It says that it's thirty-six month?
Yes, we base it off the thirty-six month.
Okay. And is it, the charges, like, flat rate or is it per usage or how do they?
It's, it's...
Is it just part of, if we're on rate?
Yeah, it's just the flat rate, so much per month.
Up to five?
Right, the five gig would be, right, over the three years, ends up being 130,000 for FATB and 135 for Sparklight. That's just the total for the thirty-six months, total cost.
And they're both five?
Yes. But they will, we were planning on doing a two gig, and if we start reaching the top of that, then we can go back to the state and say, we're capping out, and then they can recommend to do a five gig or another three gig or whatever, or the state will work with us as our bandwidth needs increase.
Okay. So, your recommendation, sorry, but I'm going to just say now, your recommendation is FATB is based solely on price because technology and equipment or whatever?
Yeah, technology are, yeah, very similar, the response times for technical support are very similar. And they're, they have, they both have NOCs, they both have 24-hour support, so it was, you know, neck-to-neck in that aspect.
What's a NOC?
Network Operations Center, where they monitor all the, all their network.
Okay. Any other questions? So, we need, so we need a motion to go ahead and go with FATB, is that what we're looking for here?
Yes, please, that you all approve, they have a right to motion.
I move that we approve the E-rate bid for category one internet service with, and we go with FATB.
Their answer is?
Yeah, for internet service.
Motion to go with FATB for internet service has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
I, you know, Dan. All right, this time, we're up against another executive session. Potentially, we have an, potentially have an action coming out of there, but that's where we're at, and then we're going to have some, just let everybody know, we do have some discussion items after the executive session, so whether or not you stick around, just know that we have discussion items of dual-sport athlete, superintendent levy information, or supplemental, sorry, supplemental levy information, ISBA Day on Hill that we'll be attending, and then we'll talk about any future gen items, and we might have all of that's what's coming after the executive session. So, we will have to make the motion to go, or let's have a break, let's have a break, sorry, we were getting there, I appreciate that. We're going to take a break and then come back and then go ahead and, so we'll have to make the motion and then we'll go into the session. We need a motion concerning...
Do we talk about?
We did, we did.
So, I can just say, I move, I make a motion that we approve an early graduation for student A.
It's been made and seconded to approve the graduation.
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
John, you're going to have to cock while you're... You vote, John.
I didn't say anything, I was waiting so you could hear me. I'll try to do that.
Yell at me.
Okay, thank you. Discussion items. We were asked to put dual-sport athlete on the discussion item, and...
Is that not J? Did we do J?
J was what we just did.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The action that we...
You were the one making the motion.
Thanks. Perfect. Okay. Got it.
I think so.
I'm just making sure you guys are faithful to this.
I don't, there's...
I can see it up, you want, Mr. Chairman?
I think he's thinking about something.
Oh, no, I haven't, yeah, okay, please, sum that up.
Yes, sir. As you know, this came up last month, that's why it's on the agenda for tonight, discussion item, and we're not the only district dealing with this right now. Our leadership here, the principal as well as athletic director, has reached out to IHSA in reference to this subject, and their advice is to leave it at the building level, let the building administrator as well as the coaches and the parents take care of this individually. My recommendation would be the same, and I would add that we wait until next year to instill anything, because that would, that would not be fair to the students in the prior sports up until this time.
Yes, as a discussion, we're not going to make any motions or make any decisions here, but if...
I have some info, I guess. I reached out to Furtland and Homedale Athletic Directors because I had heard that they allow it, and I just wanted to pick their brain to see how they do it, what, you know, is it a policy by the school board, because I thought that seemed kind of odd for it to be. So, both said it's not a school board issue, not a school board policy. It can't be necessarily just a blanket, yes, everybody can play multiple sports. They both said that it's very individual, you know, you have a student that comes and wants to run cross-country and play volleyball. They have to sit down with both coaches, parents, and the athlete. They go through their practice schedules of both, they go through the games, everything, you know, lots of communication, very upfront about this is what will be expected of you. They said, most, both of them said that most of the athletes, if they try to do two sports in the fall, they quit one about two weeks in because it's too much, but that, you know, it has worked for some as well. So, Homedale's athletic director said that golf seems to be the one that works the best with because it's, it's something that the athlete could do, like, if they ran track, they can go to the golf course after track practice and hit balls, it's open, you know, and, and also in golf, you, you have to qualify to play in a tournament, so the athlete would have to be at the qualifier and be one of the top five boys or girls to go to the tournament. He also said those spring sports, the state tournaments don't interfere like they do in the fall. But they both said they don't do it in the winter, winter sports don't do it. I don't know, it was, I personally don't see why we couldn't allow it on a very individual basis, you know, they, both Homedale and Furtland said, you know, both coaches of each athletic team have to be in agreement, and if they're not, they don't do it. That's just some info that I got.
I'm going to speak, as you would expect, right, as you would expect. More so as a parent than a school board member at this moment, my daughter obviously loves sports and is very committed and aggressive at almost anything she does. She was hoping to run both cross-country and do volleyball this year, and I can tell you right now that even as a committed athlete as she is, and as much as I would love to watch her do both, and as much as I think it would have helped the cross-country team to have her on the team earlier in the season, that is a lot to ask of a young athlete to run or do dual sports. Cross-country's tough on the body, volleyball's tough on the joints, and so for me, I think you have to be very particular, and I'm on board for making sure that it's the building administrator's decision, not a school board policy that says, we need to do this case by case, athlete by athlete, student by student, if the student's not, you know, they can make that decision based on student's proficiency in classwork and their physical ability to handle two sports. I think that's things that need to come into consideration for certain.
I agree.
And I think there are sports in our school district that could benefit from dual-sport athletes, those that suffer with smaller turnout, like cross-country, like a golf.
I think it's, I don't think we should just shut the door to it, but again, yeah, definitely coaches and administrators, parents, students, just individual basis.
I don't have a problem with this, when, you know, if the parents are involved in the decision because they're still, like, at my house or in front of each other, what could, how can we keep up with things, so...
I'm almost, it'd be like a, you know, like a contract that you have, the contract student would have to sign, you know, you have to be like a very deep commitment.
Is that meet the requirement for the discussion that we've been having with dual-sport?
We already have some, like, my daughter does cheer, she played volleyball and cheered at the same time, and I know cheer isn't a sport, but dang, it's hard work, and they practice every single day, and, and she's now doing club volleyball and cheer, so she's essentially doing two, and it is, it's exhausting, and it's a lot, but I'm glad she has opportunity to do both because she's figuring out what she likes.
Don't have any special things to say. Thank you. Thank you. Levy information.
Oh, yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I would, I could direct your attention to the paper I gave you, so you can just read along as I briefly read through a little bit. We've talked about this before, and I like talking about it every month because it's basically on your recommendation to come to fruition or not. But we've got to start talking about the next step rather quickly because we need to have a resolution next board meeting to go out to the public and put in for. And you'll see on the paper, we're gonna go out and ask for $350,000, or that's a recommendation to the board, $350,000. And you can go down, and I won't bore you with the formula, but I'll just point out that the kindergarten teachers, we talked about before, you see their salary right there, it's 129K. And then if you come down and look at the coaches, the coaching salaries, currently 62 employees cover 22 sport programs throughout the district. It's 340,000. I'm not very good at math, public or private, but we're already over the $350,000 that we're asking for. And if you go on down and you look at the, again, the total, the total of all the things that may be used for, it's 527,000. And again, I'm not very good at public math or private math, but that certainly exceeds what we're asking, what we're asking for. Meaning the general fund would have to pony up to 177K. So if you look down there, it says preliminary data from the Washington County Treasurer's Office says that value would be $39.93 per $100,000 based for the $350,000 levy. So $40 for, per 1,000. And then the last bullet is really, is really what, the silver lining, if you will, in all this is that House Bill 292 is still in place for 2024 and will reduce the amount of money taxpayers are paying, just like last year. However, if the supplemental levy was not in place, none of the money received from House Bill 292 can be used towards the projects listed above. Because with House Bill 292 comes exactly, they tell us what we can and can't do with that money. So again, never tell anybody how to vote. But you can see right here on this paper that if we wouldn't go out forward and be blessed by getting it, we would be in a, kind of in some trouble, some hot water with probably a general budget. Just for conversation's sake. And then next month, we really need to get something going. Probably gonna get, based off your guidance, recommendation, probably gonna get a couple town hall meetings. We'll toss some food in, we'll toss some food in with it. So people who wanna come, and I'll give some briefings on some things like this. Build some slides based off of this data, have you guys there as well. And we'll get a couple of those, maybe one in March, maybe one in April, and game time's May, so.
So we have to have the information in to the calendar?
I think it's March 13th. I'm trying to think of my, I'm trying to think of my Fridays in there, but we have to have it to the county. The resolution has to, I gave you a sample of the resolution. I'm not expecting you to write or tell me that resolution. If you just see the language that it is, that's probably, you could just say, we will go for X number of dollars. This is what it would be used for. You have to delineate now, this resolution that was written in '20 was not, or excuse me, '21, was not the same as '22. This was from '22. This one didn't delineate what we were gonna spend it on. That's why I'm bringing it back to your attention so that you can see what we would spend it on, what it would be used for. Because that has to be shown.
So discussion item for this month?
So on the 11th is our next board meeting, that's enough time to.
Yes, well, yes, like the next day, I would pipe it up and send, take it over. I usually hand it over to the county.
So next month, it'll be, it'll be in action, I hope. That's why we bring this today.
It will be on the agenda, it will be on your agenda. If that's what you want to do.
Yeah.
Talk to your chair and tell him your feelings. You want it on the agenda or not on the agenda?
Yeah, if we go out for the 350, the voters vote it down, can you, can then you use the House Bill 292 on those items?
No.
Not those items.
Not items listed on?
Yes, sir, correct.
Okay.
House Bill 292 specifically, well, it didn't have a lot of guidance, but the guidance that we were given preliminarily is for plant facility. So we did get the House Bill 292, we paid down the levy what we had, and then put the balance over there in this 435 account. We haven't spent it yet because we have to wait for this year's legislature to tell us what they really intended with their bill last year. So it's sitting there, but I think it's, my strong indication is from the State Department and from others, it's gonna be used for plant facility. So yeah, you're right, that's a good question.
Given the fact that you saw the legislature with the amount of money the governor wants to give us for facilities, we think, based off of that, they're probably gonna tie this in and say, here's some, here's some extra. But if you remember, we got the House Bill 292 last time, we were to pay off bonds. We had no bond. We were to pay off supplemental levy, which we did. And then any excess, we were told to put it in an account, which we did that incident count right now. You see that in your paperwork. So that's sitting there for, I guess, a rainy day until they tell us what we need to spend it on.
But it's not to be used for salaries, ever.
Correct.
So we couldn't pay for the, have the kindergarten with that, and we couldn't pay for coaches with that. So it would become, and, you know, then we'd have to make some decisions.
The money that's in the account now, the leftover, you can't spend anyway until they tell you?
Well, I, we've been cautioned, how about that? We've been cautioned, do not spend this until the legislature meets this year and tells us the direction they meant to go. The bill was kind of poorly constructed. I'm not dissing on the legislature, but I will tell you, 292 was a little, little nebulous.
I understand caution.
Okay, so it wasn't really, we didn't really understand. But we do have it, and we haven't needed to use it, which is nice, because we have a plant facility levy. But we've got it there, and we probably will be using it for plant. Goodness gracious, we've had people, we've had people that are coming to us that have ideas for that plant facility money. So it's okay, I think we'll spend it.
Thank you. Any other questions about plant facility, or about the levy, I'm sorry?
Are we gonna be fine with that 177 being picked up by general fund if it does get approved? Or, I mean, like, is there a reason why we're not going?
We both talked, we talked about it. The former board tried to increase a plant facility amount, and it was defeated. And I will tell you, that hurt in our soul. And so we're trying to say, we'll keep it the same and not increase over to our taxpayers. And we don't wanna, we don't wanna gouge them, we really don't. I think this, I think we're gonna be okay, and we're gonna probably use some of that discretionary money. We get that discretionary money that we get for having great attendance, for having qualified staff. That's gonna be okay. But we do have some other concerns that are going to come in. We've got some people that are being paid in ESAR funds that we're gonna have to bring back into the general fund. And so honestly, we may have different news for you once we start getting in. Because we're gonna start on that, the budget right away. And once we start doing some hard numbers, we may have something more to, but this is preliminary, and this is why we would go for the 350.
As unfortunate as it seems, communities like sports. And if you tell them that they have to pay for sports, they're probably more likely to pass the supplemental levy to keep sports from being paid play. As much as that may be unfortunate to hear, that seems to be a higher priority than plants and, you know, facilities.
The last one maybe wasn't advertised as well as maybe it could have been. It seemed like there was a lot of community members that were like, oh, I didn't even know about it, or it didn't, I don't know, I don't know.
About the first one?
Yeah, the one that didn't go through, it seemed like.
I can't tell you what the story is on that, I really couldn't, I couldn't.
Well, that's why I didn't vote, did you hear that a lot?
Well, that's the feedback we got, and the conversation we had regarding that is that it was, went out in email. It was in the newspaper, it was on Living in the News, and it was texted out to all people that are on that. And so our question was like, anyway, so that's what our question was, was like, we do it better. And so I think the signs to say, please vote, was what we added to that.
You know, like, I remember when I was teaching, we would, I mean, like, staff would go home with, you know, 10 to 20 pages with, like, what you just gave us, you know, and say, hey, pass this out to, pass this out to your family or people you know, you know, just to help spread.
You have to be very careful about that.
You can say more, we're just not supposed to say which way people are to vote.
No, it's just, it's not, hey, vote for this, but just here's information on, this is coming up.
Because it's, we gotta get the word out.
I'm sorry, we're gonna redo the flyer. Our flyer is ancient old, so we're gonna redo the flyer. We're gonna have a couple of town halls, and we can start right now. But after next month, after next month.
We need to vote our next month.
I just think that was maybe part of it, maybe, so that's what we heard.
We should bring that car.
Bring that car.
Close it up on the town hall, sell a round of tickets.
I'll have the keys.
Okay, does that? I need more discussion about levy.
So we're comfortable with the 350 number?
Well, you guys have to decide that, it's not ours.
Do we have a mailing list of, like, District 5? Do we have a mailing list of District 5? Do we have a mailing list of?
Well, you have, you can go to the county clerk's office and get that mailing list. You can get the list of registered voters in District 5, so the school district, that, yes, you absolutely can get that. Yes, absolutely. That will only give you registered voters, however, and it will not give you all the listings.
The claim we want, isn't it?
They're the ones that can vote, for sure.
Caution, not blocking that, add additional classes when you already tried that one, this didn't fail.
And then caution, the 350 doesn't change, the 350, it doesn't change anything, that's what we already have.
This is what we already have, this is just a review, a re-up.
What was the amount of the one that didn't pass?
It was a $500,000, okay, so that one was $500,000 for four years, plant facility. And we were able to pass at 310, which is what we had, but the 310 is now for only four years, which unfortunately you all have to either think about. Because we did, prior to that, was at 310 for eight years, but we shortened the time, so.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions?
The 350, I want more. Just be honest.
All right, Day on the Hill, is this just information that we're attending?
Yes, sir, just briefly, I'll go over real quick. Just, we're gonna show up at nine o'clock, register, they're at the Grove, and you'll see on down, we end up walking over to the State House at three o'clock, I believe. But the JINs is there, and now that I know about your meal choices, who's gonna come, I think I'll make reservations. That's all I'm gonna.
This is a really good opportunity for school board members to go to the state and meet legislatures and state representatives. They also have some really good conference classes to learn more about our duties and what the state's doing. So I look forward to seeing most of it. Some of us are gonna be digging balls in Las Vegas.
That's great.
John, if you drive over there, there's a parking garage across the street from the Grove.
Volleyball reference.
It's a big parking garage, and you can get in there, and then you just.
I totally got it, because.
It's really easy to get to, because the Grove is right next to Grove Hotel, which is a great big kind of center thing. And it's just in that mini entrance.
My combined, I think, going to places.
So also for those of you that are here, it's a two-day, and they're forced to go to that, so. All right, future gen items, does anybody have something they would like to put on the agenda for future?
I don't have to, the facility first.
More, so more discussion on, basically, the policy that we had with facility use is ongoing. So you would like that to be?
I've had enough requests that people come in and talk about it.
Is there more discussion with the administrators about that, or is there more to do? Okay, I couldn't remember.
Go further, then you'll talk about that.
Yeah, no, good, good. I just couldn't, I knew that we'd had a discussion with administrators, too, and I didn't know. Any other agenda items? Future agenda, let me help, sorry. Are we gonna have, do we need to have another special meeting coming up?
Well, I, yes, actually, a work session.
Yes.
You would like to have the work session, it would be on February 29th. Is that the last Thursday? Or the 22nd, which is the fourth Thursday in February. What, I'm gonna be gone the 22nd, and you're gonna be gone the 22nd, and we do it on the 29th?
I'll be going.
You're gonna be gone on the 29th, okay. Can we skip this February for?
Are we okay, are we okay with our policy skipping this month?
Yes, you are. The thing you're gonna have to do is you're gonna have to break those 5,000, which is personnel, up into two. And I would really like to suggest, maybe, if we're going to do those personnel policies that we bring in, perhaps WA members to sit with that.
In that work meeting.
In that work session meeting. So we may not be able to do it in a, you'd have to do it in an after-hours, so four o'clock meeting, ladies?
No policy.
The next, the next policy section that we're gonna work on is personnel. And it's pretty, I mean, there is probably, I wanna say 70 policies. Some of them we could breeze through, but some of them are gonna be pretty intense. And I think it would be behooves, I mean, I will tell you, these policies come from the ISBA. They've been vetted by the attorney, but they've also been vetted by the IEA and then given to us by the ISBA. But they're not weasels or school desert policies per se, but they have had some channels. But it would be nice if you weighed in on some of that discussion when we're doing that as a board. And then we have a work session, and we would bring that in. But can we do that in March sometime?
So our regular board meeting in March would be the 11th.
Yep.
And then that work session, if we follow in suit, would be the 29th?
29th would be during spring break.
Oh, no.
March.
We don't wanna do that. So it would be the 22nd then?
That's a Friday.
21st, or the 21st, sorry, sorry, you're correct, because we were doing it on Thursday.
There's no school the 21st, that's when parents took.
That's parent teacher, that'd be a tough one. What is the, what is the 14th like?
So we're talking about having a regular school board meeting?
Two meetings, the 11th and the 14th in the same week.
It's a Thursday.
That'd be kind, would that, or how about a work Friday? Could we do a work Friday? If we did a morning work Friday, we do that? Work Friday would be the 15th?
The 8th.
Oh, the 8th, I'm sorry. Sorry.
We would have, we would miss what we did on our bill date.
I'm sorry, what?
We would miss what we did on our bill dates.
So maybe that's not a good idea to do it then? Do you usually do your, do you do, if you're gonna do something in the building, do you usually do it in the morning or the afternoon?
Morning.
Morning.
Afternoon is usually work day. Or it's vote.
Okay. Can I point by ear and get your opinion later, and then I can put it up to the board? I know, I know there's a university that's coming to present. I know, I know there's a university that's coming to present that...
It should not be on a workday.
Okay, it shouldn't be on a workday.
Because we be putting on our employee activities.
Sorry. Okay, I will figure it out. I will give you some dates and times, and I'll give you by date and time. There are a lot to look at. It's, it's, it's a full meal deal. Hey, I'll get back to you on that.
Okay.
Yeah, I know.
The 22nd, it's a track meet. The 14th, there's nothing. The 21st, there's tennis match.
I will, I will look at all calendars.
Okay, well, to be discussed, so that will be on the future agendas to...
See if we're going to set a record.
No, we're not really. Okay, communication.
Yes, sir, good piece.
Nope, I don't think that's a good idea. It just takes that much more time.
Mr. Doolan and Board of Trustees, thank you so much for the Buy Mart gift card. It will be very handy as we adjust to life with our new little one and figure out all we need. I am so lucky to work in such a supportive district and can't wait for Royce to grow up in Leeser Schools. Love, Mike, Sid, and Royce.
I'd say the last name, but I don't know her married name.
Barnett.
Barnett.
With that, we've got one item left on the agenda.
Don't second that.
They have so much to adjourn to, they're making second all those in favor. You're so eager, that's right.